Thursday, November sixteenth, seven P M. All three subclan present. The town administrator is present. Mr. Leo Martel is recording for the citizens of Dunbarren with assistance of Linda Nickerson. Thank you. Okay. We have a public hearing tonight, but before we start the public hearing, we're gonna start squeezing budget hearing tonight from the. Yes, I'll do the minutes first. I'll take, there's two sets of minutes. I'll have a motion. Please, what are you for the regular minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve a regular meeting minutes on October ninth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
I thought the amendment would be a small change. You're spot on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. On the, on the second set of minutes, I'm gonna write those minutes based on the non-public of last week. I've got some notes. I got some notes from the town administrator. There were some issues of controversy, so I wanna make sure that I do the recording. They'll be available for next week.
I want to one. I wanna make sure.
Okay, they'll be draft, I'll be drafting. And I can send it, these minutes.
You send them to draft. Draft, I'll add some things.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay. I'll open up the public comment very quickly. Front row, you're on the agenda. Are you sure you're on the agenda? You're on the agenda. Back row, anything for public comment before you begin, Leo?
No, really not, thank you.
No? Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna pause public comment, go write the town business, and I'm gonna start in with the town clerk twenty twenty-four budget proposal. Linda, you're on.
Thank you. I put a copy in front of everybody. Justin, this is to the right, to your right. I'll give you some time to look through it, and I'll answer any questions you have, if I can.
That's gonna be high. How many voters do we have next year? No, we have January twenty-third.
We have four elections next year.
Four?
Yes.
That's gonna be fun.
Well, that's, that's where a big change goes from three thousand to eleven.
Yeah, hand on wheels.
Yep.
Everything else is just a three percent, Nicole?
Yes. Record preservation, Donna talked about digitizing. She was gonna explain more to me. Unfortunately, she hasn't been back since she mentioned it. So I'm hoping to get together with her next week because we do have a lot of things that are already digitized.
If you get a proposal for it, it can be submitted to as a bendum to your budget.
Thank you.
You don't have to come in for that.
Well, we can include it if the funds are available, too.
This year, yes.
First, I've gotta see what she's talking about having digitized because we already do have.
Some.
We have some, yes.
Okay, that could be as amendment, and so you don't have to come in for that. Just gotta delineate.
Perfect.
And you're, just need your recommendation on it.
Thank you. I just wanted to see what she had in mind.
And when I say recommendation, it doesn't have to be this, it can be any way you wanna do it.
And before I forget, and you can give these to Lee after, these are just some of the classes that Jennifer's gone through this year. This is part of her training.
Understood.
And that'll be for her personal.
First file, can't do it.
Okay, Jim, very nice, good job, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Now, are you good with the elections? I have a, a real breakdown of those figures if you wanted to see it.
I don't think so. You're pretty accurate on a normal.
Thank you.
I don't see any sense to, uh, to do the counts every time.
Just how many, how many elections do we have in twenty twenty-two? As a whole show? No, in twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, I think we only had the town and school election.
So it's two, so it's almost done, yeah, okay.
Well, town, they're held on the same, right?
Right, so you're, you're in, you're in.
We're in the ballpark.
Ballpark, yes. That's was my comment.
Okay. These are just odds and ends. These are not part of my regular budget, but this is stuff that I let Lee know to expect me to be looking for during the year. That helps our budget.
Yes, excellent.
And I know you've gotta get onto a public hearing. I got a last minute visit from Selectman Kaminsky regarding the ballot counting devices he looked at. So I scrambled to put a few things together. You can look at them tonight, you can look at them whenever. I've got a packet for everyone. I've got a quote from L H S. And I've got a quote from Voting Works. The Voting Works is the machine that light viewed. I need to let you know that if the board is considering going to ballot counting devices, that you do have to hold a public hearing. I've attached a copy of that statute. There is a, I was talking to someone from another town, and it's a much bigger town. If you look at your very last page, they had done a comparison between the L H S machine and the Voting Works machine. Price wise, what was included, what was training, and that very last page, it's kinda dark.
Yes.
But that might give you a few things to consider that, now, I've just started looking at this, so I haven't really had time to digest a lot.
Yeah, I think, I think one of your suggestions you made in the hallway to me when we were just briefly conversing amongst us was to see how, how the towns do with these. Right?
Right.
See some practical experience from other towns.
Right, because this is a first time that New Hampshire would be using the Voting Works machine.
Correct.
When I asked Selectman Kaminsky to, to go to the demo on this, I couldn't make it. I didn't have coverage that day, so he very kindly went. And I, I wanted you to know that I wasn't suggesting it because I wanna get a vote of counting device. I'm suggesting it because as we grow and our checklist gets bigger, the amount of volunteers we get to come help with the hand count is getting smaller. We're eventually going to need to consider a machine. So this was just kind of an initial, sticking my foot in the door to just kinda check out what's there and what needs to be done.
Yeah, last meeting last week, I shared with our fellow selectmen, I was, I went in with an open mind, and I think it's, I was kinda impressed with the, with the, with the actual item. And a time saver, yes. And there were still, still some pledges that I think county votes over, can over, makes it, that one's more accurate.
So this town has six of them.
But it's a big town.
So do the math out ourselves.
You've got it, you've got an individual quote just for us on top.
And we only need one.
We would only need one. We would only need one because in which the voters go through the line instead of handing their completed ballot to the person at the ballot box, it would just get put through the machine. So we don't need, if we had six machines, Mike, we'd need six people to watch, you know, one to watch the machine.
I didn't understand with Mike is the write-ins. Every write-in would get popped back out of that machine and the town moderator, the.
All the machines, the machines is my understanding, because we've never used one, is that when a machine detects a write-in, it spits it into a, a separate.
Or refuses to take it and then alerts the, the person overseeing the machine to put it in a separate.
So those, those get put aside, and those are hand counted at the end of the night. But the machine that Mike looked at, that looked like it was a lot more efficient in the hand count than the other one.
So, so I'm just thinking this time, like Biden's not gonna be on the ballot, so he'll be a write-in if people vote for him.
Right.
So it could be a majority of these ones kicked out.
Right. And Mike can explain.
The only, the only, the only thing is when they bring it to the counter, let's say it's, if it's been kicked out as a write-in, you put, you stack them in, and it basically screen brings you up right to the, where it was written in. And let's say it's Joe Biden, as an example. On vote one, ballot one, it's gotta be manually inputted by the operator, puts Joe Biden. It's a type it in, click it, that's done. If it was another write-in on the thing, it would automatically scan to the second write-in on that ballot. Okay, ballot two comes in, that gets put aside, discounted. Ballot two comes in, oh, another Joe Biden write-in. Instead of having to type it in, automatically you see Joe Biden, so it's a click, mouse click. Ballot three comes in, oh, there's only one write-in, says Joe Biden again, mouse click, that's all it is.
So it gets manually input into the same machine?
Yes.
Now, let me ask you another question.
Into the, into the aside machine, and then at the end of the day, it's merged.
And that's for a single write-in?
Correct.
Does it take any of the rest of the items off?
It adds, it puts all together. In other words, it will manually read the rest of, rest of.
You know how you're voting for several different things normally?
Right, if there's, if there's two write-ins for two different offices, it'll segregate those.
And say there's not a write-in on one line, if they pick a senator, let's say.
And it was just a.
Does that go in the machine or does it blow up that whole?
It, it goes, no, you mean the first time around?
You mean if there's no, if there's not checked for that particular office?
No, the ballot is actually reject, the ballot is rejected initially.
It's rejected initially because it has one write-in.
Correct.
On one section.
And then, then at the end of the day, it goes into a separate machine and it's counted. In other words.
So does it count all the other items?
It does, it does.
It does?
Yeah, it does.
And I know that if you wanted to host the demo.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, I have an idea of what you're talking, like when you have multiple people for one office and a write-in on this. If you have a ballot with multiple different things.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wanna know if the one write-in kicks out the whole ballot or is it read every, except for the first?
Initially, initially on the main unit, yes. Because that, that goes to a hand count ballot, a hand count ballot. And then on the, on the, what it does is, the new, the second set of software in the second machine will scan all the appropriate, shall I say, valid marks. And then if there's any invalid marks, such as a write-in, it'll skew to that, then it's, that's where the human being's gonna make a determination of who it is.
So it's not totally automated. But anyway, if you did want it, it's partially, if you did wanna consider it, there would have to be a public hearing involved on it. Also, just to remind you that if you did consider it, we, we wouldn't be able to use it until September because, you know, the January election, it's not, the budget hasn't passed. The March election, the budget hasn't passed. It will definitely come in handy in November. If you wanted to consider, and I read somewhere in the statute that the selectman can rent something like that. I don't know if, if these companies rent them out for a single election.
Well, if we had a public hearing, we could purchase it, anyway.
Okay. I'm just kinda laying out your, your options.
I know, but I don't know if we have a public hearing.
It's turn around time to get one.
That, that's a key, that's a key question because these, where the communities that were there with me, they already have a voting machines approved in their jurisdictions. Yet they can't get it delivered to, the delivery's gonna be just before the election in November next year.
Really?
Yeah, so the delivery's gonna be delayed.
It's almost a year out.
Yeah.
Right, but that November, you haven't worked a huge election like that.
Yeah. I just know that when it comes to staying there eighteen, twenty hours, and people are coming at the end of those days, it's, you know, it's a recipe for having mistakes, I would think.
It truly is.
Everybody's tired that kind of day.
They are tired, and I also mentioned to Jennifer, you know, there are pros and cons to everything, and you would lose that small town hand count thing, the accuracy that comes with most. I mean, we've, we are always dead on accurate, but I don't know, we've been lucky or whatever. But at the end of the night, and even Jennifer's picked up on it, you'll have seasoned counters who, as they turn in those forms at the end, you'll find that some of them haven't gone by the format that the moderator laid out in the beginning, whether they heard it incorrectly, whether they didn't understand it, whether they thought that their way was better, so they were gonna do it their way. With the machines, you have the consistency, it's all done the same way.
And the, the one thing I found that we're, are experts in, in this town, we make sure that the voter checklist matches the voter out list. In other words, we have a number of votes matched to people who actually came and voted on the checklist. Well, there's a discrepancy with, with, with the ballots, and the thing is, people, they, they made a point that I'm usually five votes off. What happens with those five votes? We don't worry about it, and that's what, that's what they said. And so if we were five votes off, we'd be an extra hour fixing, finding those five votes. Because we are never, we're virtually never wrong. And so that was something that I saw just in the discard pile, five votes are, we don't know what happened to them, and that's the shortcoming.
Yeah, they're, they're not a hundred percent.
Correct.
As we get bigger and bigger and have less.
And it goes, but it goes back, was it, was it a problem with the machine or was it a problem with the human checking off? And we, we've found that the humans do make mistakes checking things off. So the thing is, pros and cons each way, and I think it's worth, we should evaluate. Yeah, we should consider it.
Okay.
And maybe look into renting one if we can't get one in the time we have.
You do realize our counters, most of them have gotten up, gone to work. Cloud snow that day typically have snowstorms.
Yeah.
And then they're coming in the count during a snowstorm, I mean, it's a long day for everybody.
It is a very long day for everybody. So when I sent Mike, it wasn't with the intention of budgeting for it, it was with the intention of looking into it, so I'm so glad. Thank you for going, for taking the time to.
I was a little bit, I'll be honest with you, I was a little bit negative on it, and now I'm more ambivalent. I, I say it's got pros and it's worth looking at, okay? And so I, I think it opened my mind a little bit, but I'm not totally convinced, but I think is, we have to keep an open mind as we, as we look at these things.
Is there anything you'd like me to look into with either of those?
Is there an online demo that I could look at?
I can ask, I will ask that question.
Okay, I'm gonna have to cut you short, it's a public hearing, but I need you to do your homework on the record preservation.
Yes, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both coming in here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I have a public hearing tonight for layout of Kelsey Road as a public road pursuant to a petition layout.
Since I live on that road, as I, I'm gonna recuse myself and go to the public as I'm a butter.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Justin, happy to go back?
Yep.
Okay. We, we, we asked for a public road layout for Kelsey Road because it's pending a potential subdivision. And on occasion, to do so, a layout, if it's in the public interest for the, for the acceptance of a road, we can make changes to the road as far as things, things which would help, I'm gonna say, integration with an existing road system, ease of traffic flow, improvement to the convenience of travel, facilitation of schoolchildren, et cetera. And one of the major things that we were concerned in this town on Kelsey Road was the turnaround was barely adequate. It could be used, but only with our smaller plow trucks. And so in support of this sub, pending subdivision, we were trying to get, work it out where we could get a, a enhanced turnaround that would support our larger winged plow vehicles. And the applicant, Mr. Mike Guyney, is, was supportive of that, and so we did a layout of that road, of that section of the road for that enhanced turnaround. And we, the petition was reviewed by, was open for the public to review during normal business hours, and yesterday we had a site, a site walk of the turnaround location at the end of Kelsey Road. It was attended by two members of the public, two selectmen, and the road agent. And I said to the road agent, my question to him at the time was, is this gonna be adequate, more than adequate? In fact, it fulfills the term of an enhanced turnaround that will support large winged plow vehicles. So with that, I have a. Bear with me. Looking for the, for the D, not the D, but the.
Is that actually the, the physical petition that he submitted on October fourth?
Bear with me for a moment.
Because you have a flag on it to sign, but it would be signed by the, the owner of the land.
Okay, bear with me for a second. What it is, is what I'm looking for is of the legal description, the, the owner of the property provided a layout, a description in, in the amount of square feet that were basically gonna become part of a permanent easement, permanent easement as part of the layout of Kelsey Road in turnaround. I have it right here. Okay. So we have a petition for highway layout, it's, it's coming, it's coming to the selectmen of the, of the town of Dunbarren. And the underside represents that to accommodate the public during the occasion, the layout of turnaround area located at the end of Kelsey Road in the town of Dunbarren, as described below. I'm not gonna read that all, it was available for viewing in the town office, but it's a legal description of approximately six hundred forty-three, six thousand four hundred sixty-three square feet or point one five acres. And that is gonna become into a permanent easement in support of Kelsey, a part of Kelsey Road in the layout. Now, this is being done, is being accepted on the, on behalf of the town of Dunbarren as a, in lieu of, it's gonna, the chairman's gonna get some credit on, on a subdivision application towards his exaction fee. Not fully, just a small percentage of that. And I open it up for questions now, to the public regarding this. David?
I think that we should tell the public, I think it was a public amount of money, we should tell them the amount of money that's gonna be transferred.
Okay.
I think it was twelve thousand dollars in change.
Twelve thousand.
It might be enough.
In viewing the turnaround, the other day when they had the public hearing, it looked like it was sufficient for the town to turn around there properly. I'd like to make a note that the town of Dunbarren had complaints on almost every storm the last two years, trying to turn around a standard plow truck and a small plow truck with going over the amount of available right away that was opened up at the time. So we had to butter complaining every time, and I think this will alleviate, or hopefully alleviate, a good portion of that.
The, the exaction fee is forty-two thousand dollars approximately, and there's twelve thousand dollars of credited, of being credited. Thing is, from time to time, we're working with the planning board, we give credit for work in kind, for profit exchanges, is for, in any subdivision. For example, if there's trees to be removed on a, on a subdivision, and it's on, that the town requires to be removed, we can accept work in kind as a credit towards any exaction fee. The exaction fee, I just wanna say, the remaining thirty thousand dollars of exaction fee will be matched by the town as a, as a requirement. And we have a, we have a window to, I think a six-year window to, to use the money. If the money's not made towards those improvements that the town's requiring, the money is refunded to the applicant. And it has been in the past refunded to applicants for, when the town has not completed its, missed the six-year window. Questions for?
I'll leave them on call.
Please.
I just wanna reiterate, just Jeff Crosby, road agent, I just wanna reiterate, we are not paying the applicant the money. We are giving him a credit on the money he owes us, which reduces the amount he.
Correct. Thank you for explaining that further.
Hi, Isaiah Hutchinson, I live at nineteen Kelsey Road, so I'm gonna butter. I just wanna clarify something, and I'm afraid I didn't actually have time to look at the petition, so.
Okay.
Go for that.
Go for it.
I understand there's two telephone poles also being moved as a part of this, is that correct?
That's not part of this, the telephone poles are being, are being removed to facilitate the plot, a, a large winged truck plow utilizing that turnaround. And so that's one set of poles, there's other poles that are gonna be removed further down, starting at the top of Kelsey Road going down as part of the improvements to the, to that Kelsey Road.
Where do you live on Kelsey Road?
Nineteen, so on the second house if you're.
The law cabin.
Law cabin on the right.
Yeah, there's. And future work there, there's a couple poles that have to be moved in front of your house.
On my property?
Not on your property, they're across the street from you.
Okay.
It's in the town right away.
Okay.
And they won't be put on your property or anything like that.
That was my major concern.
Yeah, no, they actually gonna be moved further away from your property.
Even better.
Yeah, so we can, just to give you, not to labor this, but to give you a quick overview, looking toward the future, we're gonna remove some of that ledge that makes it so narrow. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, to improve, it's all about road improvement.
So you're widening the road.
Yeah, and this is down at the end.
Yes.
Of the road with that turnaround, yeah, and there's one, one pole in the center of the road right now that was put there back, I don't know, whatever number of years ago. And that's gonna be moved as part of this.
That's gonna be moved in support of the turnaround quickly. Those other two poles are not gonna be moved until the applicant pays his exaction fee, the plan is filed and is approved, and then we can plan and, and budget for that appropriately, working with the road agent.
I think there's more than two, right?
Yes.
There's more than two. But there was six in addition to the one.
Yeah, I think they were just concerned about the ones that are across the street. Just making sure there's nothing happening to my property within my range.
No.
No, I understand how it's written.
In the past, in the past, let's say the subdivision is not approved, okay?
Let's hope.
Well, if it's not approved, I, I hope it is for the benefit of, of the owner. But the turnaround will actually facilitate helping all residents on there, because it'll allow more timely plowing with a larger truck without their plow.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the, to the turnaround at all, I just wanted to make sure.
And the thing is, with all, you know, the residents have habitually, some of them have habitually complained up there, and I hear them loud and clear, but when you can't get a, a plow up there big enough to handle the workload, that's the only reason we, we couldn't get to it.
No, absolutely, I understand, I understand, thank you.
Okay, good question, any, any other questions?
Question.
Sure.
Nate Mossroth.
Say again, Nate?
Nate Mossroth.
Okay.
What could happen to this turnaround if the owner goes bankrupt or he doesn't subdivide?
Thing is, if he sub, we have, we have a legal document that's gonna, as part of the low, road layout, that becomes a permanent easement on that road, it becomes part of the road. In other words, that six thousand square feet that we're enhancing the turnaround with, it's belong, it's, we have a permanent easement as part of the road.
And the town is gonna construct that turnaround. It's all on the town.
Before.
Before.
Before the subdivision.
Rather than subdivision gets recorded or anything.
It's, it's, it's independent of the subdivision.
Yeah, it's a separate issue, and we were informed by the town attorney after having him review everything, this was the correct way to do it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all legal and it is two separate issues.
But we're not gonna be buying it for twelve thousand dollars.
No. We're giving him a credit.
No, the thing is.
Well, but we're not writing a lot of checks on.
And the thing is, if the subdivision never goes forward.
We still have the.
He doesn't get any money.
Yeah.
We still have the.
He doesn't get any credit.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
So I think it's a benefit for all residents who live on Kelsey Road. And that's, that's my goal. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Mr.
Brian Pike, Two Pussel Road. So as I understand this, the subdivision hasn't been approved yet?
Correct.
No, it's approved.
It's, it's been approved, not recorded.
Not recorded.
Okay, so there is light into the tunnel then.
For the subdivision?
Right.
Absolutely, yes, I, 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 I think it will go forward. I think one of the things that we were commenting this week with the, with, with the applicant surveyor, he's gotta put some bounds, bounds in there, and that has to be done before it's recorded. Okay? But the thing is, one of the things, well, I went through this process, I was sitting on the planning board at the time, I was trying to tie the two together, and it's a separate issue, and we realized it was a separate issue. We get the turnaround as an issue and, and the subdivision as a second issue.
Right. I follow it though, is okay, if the subdivision goes through and they build the road and such, will the turnaround disappear? Because then the road will continue up and I assume it'll be a cul-de-sac like.
No, no, they, this is, this is, this is the, we've incorporated, they've used, they proposed a sub, turnaround that was incorporated into their subdivision plans. And so the, their lay, their layout, and, and they state the area which they, which we worked with his surveyor to determine what would be the best place to put the turnaround.
Funny, because the road's gonna continue on beyond the turnaround, right?
No.
So, so we're.
Okay, do you, do you remember, when you were, under your, under your, there was a small, under your supervision as, as a second floor? Do you remember there was a small turnaround? I can show you the map here.
I remember that real well.
All right, it's basically taking that turnaround and enhancing it to accommodate larger vehicles.
But I also, when I was on the planning board, we followed the subdivision was supposed to go beyond and up towards the lost downtown line.
Not at all.
No, it's not.
Not at all. And the thing is.
He's got large lots over there.
Yes, yeah.
I guess it's more of a, not necessarily follow it, but more of a, and a thought for the future. I know you said all the stuff was here at the town office, but not everybody can make it to the town office during the regular business hours. Would it be who wants to take and start putting some of the stuff on the internet? So when you say, hey, there's, there's gonna be a public hearing, here's all the documents to go with it, like, so you don't have to read them here.
I'll, I'll take it to the board for consideration.
No, it just might make life a little bit easier for the general public here that might wanna see it before we get here, because we can't come here during the day.
Yep, we can take it for consideration. But it's been out, it's been, it's been available for almost how?
They're over thirty days.
Over thirty days, a month out there.
And not everybody has the opportunity.
Ten town hall hours are.
Yeah.
Eight four Monday to Friday.
Right. Impossible for me to make.
That's good.
Can I see if they would like to, if you don't have a Thursday hours for the town clerk anymore for registered vehicles?
I guess, okay, I'll take a look, thank you.
That should be relooked at, too.
Well, the thing is, remember the town clerk is an elected official, sets her own hours, and the thing is, I, I'm not gonna defend her, but the thing is.
She doesn't work for herself.
The one thing, she works for the town, for the public. The one thing she has improved significantly is the ability to register a vehicle online, which I think is very helpful. The one thing, she works for the town, for the public, the one thing she has improved significantly is the ability to, uh, register a vehicle online, which I think is very helpful.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm not gonna be able to handle it online. When it comes to that kinda stuff, moving money.
Okay.
Oh, but can I just add one?
Please.
All this information that we're talking about tonight was discussed at the planning board meetings, or several meetings over the course of the time, which I'm sure you got a notice from it as in the butter.
Uh, this, depending on when they were.
Yeah, I, you know, usually haven't lived there long enough, right?
Yes.
Things been going on a long time, so it, it's not a, it's, I shouldn't say it's not like a surprise, it's all part of the grand plan. Of the subdivision to accompany that, because that was the town's major concern, was having adequate turnaround, A, for plowing snow and maintenance of the road. B, fire trucks and ambulances, and, you know, the, stand up UPS, FedEx, you know?
Oh, yeah, that was on.
Yeah, so, that's what Mike's getting at when he says, you know, the general mowing public and everything, it's a, it's a benefit. And, uh, we were advised by our town attorney, this is the process that we have to do, go through to make it correct and a hundred percent legal.
Yeah, the thing is, it was the only process for me, when I first thought we'd have to purchase it, and then we, we cannot, the sled board cannot just go right, outright and purchase it. Usually there's legislative body, which is the town, uh, public, has to approve it, which would've been a no-brainer, but thing is, uh, that's why we, uh, have legal counsel to basically advise us. Make sure we're doing it the rightly.
Question, Mike.
Go ahead.
Uh, regarding the turnaround, is it town or dirt?
Well-packed dirt.
Okay.
Just like the rest of the road. Okay. Good question, but the thing is, um, we had some com- public comment yesterday that they were looking for gold-paved roads, and I had to decline that.
They're below the asphalt.
Well, dig for it.
I had one more question over here, yes.
Just a, a comment, Brett St. Clair, Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Um, there's been, um, landing's turtles spotted in that area. And I was just wondering if Jeff, we could give you, or you could tell us if you're not the right person to give these to. Make up like a little one-page flyer that who's ever worked doing the work down there would know what these turtles look like.
Yeah.
And, you know. Obviously, they're not gonna run over them, but just, you know, pick them up and move them, you know, try to, try to make an effort not to, you know, hurt them or something, you know, if they spot one of them.
No turtle soup for you, Jeff.
Yeah, no, they're just very distinct, they have, they look like a, um, German armed helmet. And, and they're, they're, you know. They're very, they're pretty rare, you actually, you're supposed to call like fishing game or somebody like that.
Jeff, I'm gonna speak on behalf of Jeff, we'll be doing some of the initial work on the site, and he'll also be doing subcontracting some of the tree removal.
Yeah, anyway, would, can, can we give you something like that, Jeff?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
The only thing that I got to say is, they must be gaining in. Popularity, because every project we're involved with, it seems to be a landing turtle on the area, so they must be really propagated.
Well, actually, somebody actually wrote to us when this came up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm sure there'll be no turtle soup that night. Okay, uh, any other questions before I close public hearing? Okay, uh, it's between, uh, are you in favor of approving this as? Yep. All in favor?
I.
Okay, we have, we're gonna accept this, uh, lean, I'm gonna ask, did this have Mike sign this? I think you already did sign it, we have signed copies.
There is a signed copy in there?
Yes, there is.
Okay, but I don't know that it had the meats and bounds that we received from.
Uh, you may wanna look at that, uh.
Yeah, we got, I'll, I'll verify.
Okay, verify that, and I think we're good to go. And, uh, what that does, right now, I think is, uh, I, as approving it, it puts a lot of pressure on my road agent, and the thing is, uh. I'm gonna work on his timetable, because weather permitted, he's gonna try to do as much as he can, uh, setting telephone poles as initially. And, and doing as much work as he can, but.
Given the time of year, it's gonna be limited.
It's gonna be limited, and, uh, Jeff, I only wish I could've done this earlier, but we.
Well, we tried.
We tried.
Tried. Everybody made an honest effort, and I wanna thank you for seeing it through and getting to this point.
I feel, I, I feel like we're making progress.
Yeah.
No, this, that's, that's, that's bottom line, we're making progress.
It's a positive thing.
Yeah.
Slow and steady.
Slow and steady, okay, uh, okay, I'm, the public hearing, I'm gonna now declare it's closed, and we'll move on to the regulations and stuff. For those who came to the public, public hearing, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming out. Jeff? You're on, you're on, you're in the hole now.
My turn in the barrel, you got it.
Did I give you guys a copy of this budget?
Yes, I have it.
You know, the latest and greatest?
Yeah.
It was in my packet.
Probably the latest. I leaned in and wanted a, a step increase of, uh, Pete Gamache, our town clerk, he was getting. Just changed my numbers over, but she had.
You don't have it in your bag?
Please stand by, Jeff, a moment.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can't, I can't scrutinize it, then I can't see it.
Too many things going.
Hey, no!
This thing here, is this what you're looking?
No. No, that's a, yeah, something like that.
Well, this is the proposed.
Is that the same thing right here?
No, that's a lot.
Okay. But Alex, go ahead, you have the floor, give the overview.
Well, yeah, we, uh, listened to it, not directly, but what your, what the select would put out there as a guidance.
Okay.
That, uh, you wanted to level fund his services. And if you go through this, do you wanna go through it line by line?
You only went up three thousand dollars?
Yeah, at the end of the day, we went from, our, our budget last year was six hundred nineteen.
I don't think we gotta go through any lines.
Well, yeah, and then, we're only up, part of that basically was the increase.
Cola?
Uh, yes.
Step, yeah.
Yeah, but internally in the budget, I moved a few numbers around. A lot of things like roadside mowing, we've increased our roadside mowing. One of the major things was countryside development, there's sixty-six hundred feet of road in there, and it's a nice place to mow, it's all grass. No trees, but it just takes longer, and a few other things, so I, I bumped it up to what, we spent ten nine, ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, I bumped it up to about. You know, and there's a couple other items like that when you go through there, um. Diesel fuel, I kept the same, because we're within that budget, um. As far as being there, even though the prices of fuel's been jumping around, was still right there, so I kept that the same, um. Trying to go through this.
Did you incre- did you account for Kelsey Road in, in the budget?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I did not, but it was, that is basically, anything we do in there will come out of our construction and paving, yeah. Uh, then when you get to the winter. Maintenance.
Yes.
Issues, I just, we've been using a number of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that category. And basically, that took care of the subcontractors, the road salt and the sand. We spent more on subcontractors this year, we were nervous about our salt. Budget, because it was increased, but then it went down a little bit this fall, and we're in good shape with that, so basically, what I did is I lowered that from seventy-five to sixty. And increased the winter subcontractors by ten to reflect pretty much what we pay now.
Okay.
It's just internally, you know, around, I mean, at the end of the day, we gotta plow the snow.
Right.
You know, and we're not gonna not plow the snow, um.
Yeah.
That kinda, as far as I'm concerned, is where it all begins, that's a necessity, we have to do it. And it, it's unfortunate that we have a bang-up winter, and for some reason, we go over, we just have to absorb it somewhere else.
Yeah.
But these numbers seem, they've been using them for a number of years, and they seem to work out quite well. If you. Go with the winter sand, you'll say, wow, you really went over on the winter sand this year. But there were a couple reasons for that, the major reason is, and it, it's kinda not complicated, but it all ties together, you gotta, kinda understand the whole picture. We get our winter sand from land that the town forest owns, and the town forest has. The Society of Protection of Hampshire Forest has an easement on that town forest land, and they are stewards to keep an eye on us. And a number of years ago, there was a, a big to-do about closing the pit off, and we weren't supposed to be getting sand out of there, but. The town forest committee negotiated a deal out with the forest society, that there were gonna be parameters for how far we could excavate and all that, and that, that's all behind us. But they've been kinda putting pressure on us to get to the point where we were. Can get it closed off, so we spent quite a bit of time screening extra sand to remove it, so we could grade the pit before getting it. So we, basically, at the end of the day, we got enough sand screened down there for all of the next year and part of the fall. And we have all the sand we need for this year at Hyatt Garage.
Okay.
So it was kinda.
Investment in the future.
Yeah, and, and, again, not to labor this and beat this to death, but we were doing road work in the area, and we have to dig the ditches out and size the road, it's a loamy type material. And we dump that on the pit and grade it out to reclaim it, so grass will grow and all that, so everything was kinda fitting together, we were doing a lot of that work in the area, so, I mean. That's always a challenge for us, getting rid of that stuff, and the closer we can haul it, the better it is financially for the town. So it, it was kind of a, you know, it was waving more information than you probably wanna care about, but it, it all tied together, and that's why that number sticks out so well, and it's, it'll be a good number.
Okay.
To use the twenty.
Now, putting the budget aside, I think we wanna do a warrant article too?
Yes, and we had been talking over the summer about increasing our staff by one person.
Moving a part-timer to a full-timer?
Yes, that position. But we, we still rely on some part-time too, but it's not gonna be.
Understood.
That won't totally go away.
No, but, and, and.
Really?
If it was two full-time workers. For that. And that'll be done via warrant?
Yes, we had, uh, talked about that in great length, and we all kinda came to the agreement that we should take it before the voters and let them.
Okay, chime in on it.
Yeah, right?
And a truck, you're gonna do?
Yeah, and a truck, that's, that's, excuse me?
Truck the following year?
I would like to do the truck this year coming up too, because.
So you want a warrant for a full-timer?
Yeah.
And a warrant for a truck?
Yeah, and the truck would be a leased person.
A leased, that's what I wanna make sure, yeah.
No, no, it softens the.
Have you got any breakdowns pricing on that yet?
Not yet, but I will have them shortly.
Okay, we need that.
Yeah, 'cause that's. And again, um, I don't know how that works. We'll take that before the voters as well.
Yeah.
And that would be in March, so we would do that. This, it's a twofold thing, we really do need another employee, uh, we're pretty fortunate with the gentleman we have now, Pete Gamache. He does a lot of tasks on his own, which is, he's very capable, and doesn't have a problem with it, but working on the side of the road and stuff. You, sometimes, it can be risky, and you should have a, a second person in case something happens.
And I understand.
And it, and we need, we have work that has to be done.
Right, and winter is becoming more of a challenge.
And that's why I was gonna go, the next step was, I had a gentleman retire Bill Nicholas for plowing snows and subcontractors here, I haven't been able to fill the position.
Right.
Um, you had some people who tried to do what they could to help us out, and hasn't materialized, and it's just, it, it's tough to get people. I mean, and all the surrounding towns are in a similar situation. So, what this will also do, we hire the full-time employee, we set him up with a truck and everything, it gives us another person to plow snow. It takes the pressure off subcontractors.
Right.
I think we're fortunate to have Nate, he's been plowing for us a bunch of years, I guess he likes it, he keeps coming back.
I guess so.
Very reliable, does a great job, I'm lucky to have him.
No, no, seriously, I, I don't mind it.
I, you know.
I can take all the hours that I, that winter could throw at me.
It, but we, there aren't many individuals like him, to be honest with you, and, uh, so. We're growing and we're changing, the town's growing and changing.
And, and the problem is, when you, when you, when you gotta go to work and this road's on plowed, it's, it's a challenge, and the thing is, that's one of the services that we, we have to provide.
Exactly, you know, I mean, it's just the way it is.
Okay.
And, uh, so that's another reason why I, I tried to work with what we had in our budget, so we didn't have any big increases there.
Do you have any questions?
We have one more warrant on this.
Okay, I'm sorry, what, the last warrant was gonna be?
Would be a capital reserve.
Right.
I mean, which we've been doing, a couple of years, we. Our capital improvement plan.
Right.
Was presented to you people, and it has a number in there.
Forty-two thousand?
Yeah, that was anticipated, because when we crafted that, it was.
Now, you already have a capital improvement, right?
Yes, we have a capital.
You're just talking about putting that money into that same one?
Yes, and I don't.
It's forty thousand.
Yeah, there's forty thousand in it right now, because we've been putting a little away every year.
What do we, what did we do in that amount last year?
Ten, I think.
I think we, we should.
We lowered it down, because we used them for wood.
Yeah, you had some other items.
They go at about twenty a year though, normally in that.
Yes, typically, but the capital improvement committee recommended this.
And for the public, what does that, what is that money used for? When we purchase vehicles.
Yeah.
Equipment, uh, it cushions the shock, and stabilizes the tax rate.
Cause, right now, this is just a quick number, a plow vehicle, all set up with all the plow sanders and all that, is close to two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we, we bought a new one in two thousand twenty, which is hard to believe, it's gonna be four years old, seems like it's brand-new still.
It is brand-new.
Yeah, but no, like, four years goes pretty rough, three years now, four years, and then this goes through, and, uh. It was, I think, like a hundred and seventy-something, but as we know, everything decreased.
So his current balance is sixty-five thousand, six hundred thirteen, and by, with this article passing, he'll add another forty to it.
So, um.
Forty was sixty in it right now?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty-five, sixty thirteen.
Oh, wow, I didn't realize it was that much.
Right.
That was not, that's not with the forty we're talking about, that's what, today if we pulled it up, that's what's in it.
That's what's in there, it's March.
Good, okay.
Okay, so we can drop it down to twenty.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the thing is, you, you know, you, you work with other departments, if the, if the department has a priority, we always shift our little bit to help the priority.
Shift it back and forth, but still try to move ahead.
Yes, yes, we don't wanna stagnate.
So, that's pretty much it with the budget, it's not really changing much, and like Dave says, at the end of the day, I mean, it's not even. Twenty-four hundred dollars.
Well, it is changing, Jeff, there's something you didn't bring up, we're not going to the voters to ask them for a hundred thousand dollars for paving.
No, exactly.
Which we have no payment, we're all.
Yep, I'm just saying though.
But every year, but every year, that has, has come down, right, continued to go down. First couple of years, I don't think it's too significant, but it starts to.
But I think it's important to put in front of the voters, and I think on that meeting, we should do that as well.
Yeah, and we explained that to them, I thought, for a bit.
Yeah, we did, but everybody had a guess.
Right, it's, it was matter, doesn't, doesn't matter.
So anyway, that's where we're at.
Okay.
And with the winter coloring, there's been no interest with six-wheelers or anything like that?
None of any large trucks, I continually have calls from basically landscaper-type trucks, which. They have their purpose and they're good, but plowing roadways, they're not that effective, because the plows are light and they don't scrape very well. And the heavy traffic areas, the snow packs, it turns into a hard ice snowpack, you need something with a little more weight. We do utilize our town five-fifty inches heavy one, but it has a, a commercial ten-foot heavy road-type plow on it. And we plow some of the small roads with that, and, uh, like, John Wigan is a subcontractor, and he plows this parking lot, the school and all that. And with his type of truck, which is a one-time, and that parking lot, so it works fine, but. And, I mean, I had a couple guys that I've talked to, and, uh. It is starting to get kinda crazy, I guess, some towns are offering sign-on bonuses for guys and all that, and I don't know how that works.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and, but I, and I don't know how it works.
Well, we're still keep the stipend?
Yeah, we're gonna keep the stipend, one individual I talked to, uh, he wanted to call up and check in with us to see what we were paying, the place he was gonna go work, they had. Instead of the five-hour stipend that we have to standby pay, they had ten hours. So, you know, and he, like he said, I gotta go where I can make more money, and I can, I totally understand.
Yeah, trucks aren't cheap anymore.
No, and I, I mean. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. I think we're, gentlemen, if you have no more questions, I think we should, we're good to go.
Good to go, thank you.
Now, maybe the more numbers on that lease thing, and I think Lean is crafted, you know, on the labor part, she's got all the even stuff.
So I'm glad to hear the amount we already have in that fund, because if there is.
Yeah, I, I'm surprised.
When you do the lease, they might wanna uh, balloon up front, then a normal payment after that.
Yes, exactly.
Figure all that out.
Yeah, no, exactly. And, like I said, she's working on that.
How long would a lease be?
We're gonna see what they come to us and could.
Four or five years, you can tailor it pretty much.
Well, no, cuz you'd want a newer truck at that point, so you'd probably change the lease over in five years or so.
Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll get back to you, we got any questions?
Yeah, that's great.
I just wanna say thank you for coming out, uh, yesterday for the.
Oh, no, I, I got a definite interest, oh, for sure.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for keeping your services level.
Yeah, I, no, I.
Okay, come on up.
Sorry to hear this, the vote counters are gonna become obsolete.
Well, not yet, no decisions have been made yet.
Yeah, I remember many good times down there, you know? You can be depressing your neighbors that way. Um, anyways, reason I'm here, uh, Susan wants to celebrate her eightieth birthday with family and friends. And the town hall has a lot of good memories for us. Kids used to put on Christmas plays a long time ago, and it would be, it would have other functions up there, so. We're, um, I reserved it for the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And Lean has all that information. Our daughters came back and asked whether they could have wine with the dinner, cuz they're doing all the planning. And I read through the procedures and that's your decision, not mine, so I thought I'd present it to you and see what you thought.
Well. First of all, I apologize, because I think the town staff may, has made, made a judgment error in accepting the application.
Oh.
Okay, this policy specifically said, there's not to be used for, I'm gonna say, second floor is not available for commercial services. Organizations for sole purposes of sale of goods, money they're gaining, nor for purely private social functions at this time.
Oh, I, I, it's kind of different message.
Yeah, that was right, that was in the first paragraph of our, of policy.
Yeah.
And uh.
But then, uh.
And the thing is, except, except, exceptions may, to this may be made and considered by the board of selectmen, I'll leave it right there, but the thing is, the problem is, once we open it for one.
Yeah, no, I understand your situation.
Yeah, and the thing is, I, I like baby showers, then someone else has a graduation party, and. And this becomes a myriad of exceptions we have to, we open the door, and so, gentlemen, if you come in, I'll be out here.
Well, I'm just gonna start out by saying, we, we worked on that policy for a long time with the whole, uh, board, the town hall restoration committee.
Right.
And in conjunction with the, um. The library and the staff of trustees there and with the board. I've been over two years. And one thing what we wanna do is make sure that we have uses that were available for every town.
Organization.
Function or organization within the town that was labeled Dunbarton function. And we didn't want any outside, um, people coming in to use that. And what we decided to do was go at that rate for at least a couple of years to see. How much use the, the, um, town hall got on the second floor. And then, if it didn't look like it was being used enough to maybe. Have another meeting and consider some of these other functions like baby showers and, um, you know. Birthdays for long time residents, stuff like that, we did make an exception on that policy where somebody had a. A funeral of a long time resident, as we just add, and, and have a function for something like that. But other than that exception. We tried to narrow it down, only to make sure that we had uses for all the board, you know, the Boy Scouts and the, um, all the different.
And it was their Monday for the garden club.
Yeah, for all of those clubs in Dunbarton that need that, and it's been being used a real lot. And our only dilemma is, um, they, they already kind of approached to use it, and then. The next thing we're worried about is if, if we do allow one. Then it kinda opens up an envelope by everybody, yeah, and I'm, and we're a little worried about that, so. I don't know what the board's thoughts, uh, since they allowed them, if you wanna let this one go, and then just make sure that it's known on the record that. You know, I think that might be a good way to go on this, and some, the board, I mean, the office girls, which you do put in charge of this. Didn't say it was okay to, to allow it this one time, but to make sure as this public meeting's going on, that this is to be a. A no-go from here on out.
I don't know if we should really do that. I think if we let one go, we're gonna have to make an exception for them all, need to say. I know they already approved it, but unfortunately. These have to come in front of us.
Right.
And that's in our policy. And we, we talked about that, like you said, numerous times over this policy. And I think we should stick by it.
I mean, we did get a lot of input on, on the policy and went back and forth bantering what was gonna be allowed in there, and what wasn't gonna be, and we tried to keep it.
Yeah, I was overruled, I wanted to use, uh, use it to be.
No, I, I can see both sides.
You know, they was talking about renting it out to outside entities, and we, we, you know, we pushed that all aside and said. Let's use it for the town of Dunbarton's functions only, and see how the use goes, and, and kinda go from there. And I know in the past, people had anniversary parties up there and all kinds of things.
Yeah, we had a couple of, you know, twenty years back.
Yeah.
We had celebrations up there.
Yeah, and, and someday, I think we're gonna probably be back to that status, just, we wanted to see how much use was there, cuz there's a lot more. Um, town type programs.
We've, we've become pleasantly surprised that it's being used as much as it is.
Yeah.
The li- the library has many of activities going on up there, we have, uh, Boy Scouts using it, we have, uh, hockey clubs using it.
It can, it can use a full, regular, part-time person to hook these things, because it is very involved and very.
That's not gonna happen.
I'm just saying, it is being used quite a lot.
Good, put in work.
I'm gonna hire another person, y'all. Yeah.
So. Uh, we're at a dilemma here, so the thing is, um, I hear.
I can, I can accept the fact that if it's too much of a problem.
It, it, it does put it in a problem, because we say yes to do, you're a nice guy, you've done a lot for this town, and. There's ten other residents who do the same thing.
Yeah.
And there's a former selectman may wanna use it for a, for his, for, for, for a birthday, another birthday party.
Well, I'm hoping down the road that that is possible, but.
Potentially yes, because we don't, what, 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 the thing the board didn't wanna do is have that building be empty and not be used. Because we, the town put a lot of effort into that, and we don't wanna go unused, and that was, uh, that was our fear, that it go unused, and then we'd have to do something.
And you know, what we decided to do too is, look at that policy in a year and a half or two years, and. Maybe make some amendments one way or another, and, uh, to try and make sure the building is being used and used properly.
And we want it taken care of too. We don't wanna just bombard it with a ton of uses, so that people don't. Get people in that that don't care, and it start abusing, you know, the floors, we spent a lot of money on the floors and everything up there, so.
And for the record, I'm gonna talk about user fee again, I was put down on the user fee, and it was, it was decided that. Uh, we would accept donations, and to this day, with all the activities, how many donations have we gotten?
None.
Have you asked for any?
No, but it's on the form.
It's on the board. Okay.
Well, I, I can see that, um, some of the nonprofit clubs and that sort.
I, I, I know, I, I say that, I say that with a little tongue in cheek to raise out, but the thing is.
For individuals, I think a user fee, user fee would be totally appropriate.
Yeah, we decided not to because.
Initially, not to, because it, it is our dollars, tax dollars that went to that.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, that, that resolves it.
It does, and the thing is, I apologize, I really do, cuz my heart, I, I can, I can see it's around me, but. Then next week, I'm gonna have two other people doing the same thing to me, and I, so I have to draw the line, and gentlemen, we have consensus?
Yeah. Okay, no, I thank you for your time, and, uh, we'll find them on this one, get them out of the possibility.
Sorry, sorry about that, really, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, Dave was gonna fire the town employee who initially moved that, but we had to keep him at bay.
Check for the school if you move the center.
Okay.
I'll make sure I go over it with the girls.
Go, I am deep.
Oh. Okay, Mr. Zahir. Ahmad, come on, please come on, I welcome back.
Back here again.
Yes, and the thing is, I got a copy of the, uh, uh, from the, from the, uh, state, did you get a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. What can we do for you? It seems like there's a lot of work to be done.
I know, it actually is not much. Uh, first of all, I mean. And you know, I was dealing with our inspector for three months. And he would tell me to upgrade my electric system. If you don't know about electric system, they're like a hundred amp or two hundred amps, or maybe could be more. So I already have a two hundred amp system installed in my house.
Okay.
So, I keep asking him why I have to do it, he won't help me. Okay, he should have told me, like, this guy tells you, that's why you do it. So finally, I blew up on him.
Okay.
And I apologize for that, I, but I could not control that. And, uh, I got the, like I said, I got the.
The state inspector's report.
No, so this is a ever source.
Right, right.
That is, uh, I got the permit from the town. And also, I put the application in ever source. And that is a completion of certificate. Okay, if you look on the bottom there, the first page, that's where he's supposed to sign, so I can get a. Uh, get a net meter.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what that is.
But the thing is, with all the deficiencies that the state came up.
Okay.
That's the, to me, that's the issue.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the solar panels were not properly grounded, okay? So, they have different way of doing things. See, now, I told David, that my parts are older parts, okay, older panels. The new panels now they use, they don't use inverter. Inverter is the one.
I understood, I know what inverter is.
These situations.
Yes.
So they already built in there, okay, and a different way of doing things. Mine are older, they're there, now this is. They look like in my yard.
Right, I understood.
And this is the picture, you can see I have connected all the. All the panels now to each other.
Okay.
And this is the ground, this is like eight foot hole that goes into the ground.
These have been made subsequent to the, following past inspection, okay?
Yeah, that's what he said, they're not grounded, okay? Uh.
And what do you want, uh, this board to do for you?
I wanted you to get me a net meter.
But the thing is, you have to make sure that the, the state has already given you a list of deficiencies.
That's right here.
And have you addressed them all?
Yes.
And then, has a building inspector been to your, to, has gone through every item with you?
Which one gonna come now, the old guy or this guy gonna come?
Well.
I think that, both of them again.
I think both, yeah. My problem is, so that we need to arrange an appointment, inspection appointment, for, for them to come out again. We, we're not subject matter experts when it comes to electricity, I'm not a physician, and these two gentlemen are electricians, but we rely upon these subject matter experts. Okay?
My problem is that I have, he said, tell me, he will tell me, oh, your ground is not right. Okay, and if I ask him why. Okay, he won't say me anything, because the way you ground the system is like you put a copper rod in the ground. Eight foot pop around, and you ground it. So he keeps saying it's not right. See what I'm saying? So that's what, and when he says it, compression.
I think, just, remind, they did reference all of the code situations specific to each of the lines that they had there. So, like the grounds you're talking about, typically, there's two grounds six feet apart, eight feet down in the ground. But in these codes where they reference it. I mean, even the code books are here available at the town, you can look at each one of those that are on here, and it will show you the proper installation. If that helps you at all. But, like Mike said, they do have to come back out and re-inspect to, to check these items that they've listed at least. Once you've done.
I gotta make it, no, he, you know, he has some of the things that really don't make, even nitpicking, if you ask me.
Well, the thing is, inspections are for safety, uh, safety of the, especially when you hook it up to the grid. I think is, it's, it's sa- safety of, wha- wha- electrical workers on the wires, on the grid, cuz you're hooking your system up to the grid. Power goes down, you're hooked up, and there's gotta be safety measures in there.
Yeah, but I, I told them, first of all, my system works perfect, I showed it to him. Second, I told him, I said, it's got a bad feeling. So my inverter is designed, the minute it doesn't, uh, power failure, it shuts off.
Okay, but the thing is, I'm not, you, you.
No, I'm trying to tell this guy, I don't know how to satisfy him, you know, I would have him saying, tell you.
But the thing is, you couldn't, there was a little friction, we noticed between you and our inspector, so we got the state inspector, who's more of a subject matter expert on this. To come in and provide expertise. And, uh, he made a list of all, he looked at the system, wrote down everything we could think of that was wrong, yeah, he was nitpicking, but those things have to be installed right. I almost get an electrician, consider getting an electrician and said to him yourself, get an electrician to look at this, electrician, not any electrician, an electrician who puts in solar panels.
Ah, he has a guy, you know?
Yeah.
They all have a different way of doing things, you know, whether new system, the old parts, okay?
But there are subject matter experts in the commercial sector right now, who, who, who put these things in.
One, one, if you look in there, one is a compression fitting, you know, he says.
Yeah.
You know what that would be? When the conduit comes from the ground, there's gotta be a slip thing put on it. So when the ground goes up, it can compensate.
Okay.
If it doesn't make any sense to you, I mean, I have plenty of room in there. These are the nitpicking things, you know, he's saying to me, compression fitting. I have put a emergency switch next to it, you know, they asked me.
But, but the thing is.
All right, you send it to him, so I have to work with him, I.
You, you have to, because the thing is, you, you can plead your case to us, but the thing is, I, I'm not gonna challenge the state. Electrical inspector, who's a subject matter expert, knows it on, in the back of his hand, I can't challenge him, we can't challenge, even, I don't think our building inspector. Has the, uh, knowledge to challenge him, and for you to challenge him, I think you're, you're not an electrician, you may have some knowledge, and the thing is, I applaud you with your knowledge, but. You, you can't go challenging the, the state inspector. He.
All right, I haven't seen, but I can work with him, you know?
That, that's what, that's what we're trying to do, and the thing is, if you can't do it, you could, then I would suggest you, uh, seek, um, commercial help to help you. Someone who, who knows these things, um, because you may have your way of doing it, and to you, it may be perfectly safe, but. This code, this gotta be followed, that, we have codes that gotta be followed. Help me out here, am I saying it correct?
I think you're absolutely accurate, I, I.
All right, cool, I, okay, I can talk to him one more time, and see what he says for me.
Right.
I think if you fixed everything on that list, or you feel that everything is fixed, those inspectors need to all come up. And review the list and make sure everything's correct.
And the, the other thing too, is for some reason, you don't think you can talk through Brian, I mean. Scott from the state here, I'm sure would come out and look at him to double check.
But see, if you see, that isn't mine, okay, this is the inverter installed in my house, okay? So this wire comes in.
Right.
And I'm hooked up to that. Now, he had, there are different ways to do this, to hook up, okay? All these electricians do that different ways, some hook to the feeder, some this and that. So he is making these kind of things, like hooked up in the wrong place. So that's why I had to make sense with him, because I did talk to electrician.
But the thing is, electricians, um, they're not always right, a lot, a lot, a lot of.
I found that out, you know, I did.
Electricians will tell you what they wanna do, then they, you pay the bill, and then you never see them again.
Because that's what he was going in the beginning, he told me I have to upgrade.
Yeah.
And I'm talking to electrician, they are talking about two to three thousand dollars to upgrade. We cannot be not the case.
Okay, I, I would, I, to me, I, I, I can only rely upon the subject matter of the state, I, I mean, really.
All right, can you ask him, have him to come in, and I can go over with him again? I mean, can I inspect myself?
Well, he's got, needs to be inspected again, to make sure that things are completed, and, uh.
I would just have him call in, either speak to Brian or call in, uh, Scott's number is right at the bottom there.
Yeah, you, you got his number on the, on the bottom of the sheet.
Okay, yeah.
Scott, and, uh, the thing is, uh, what, first thing I've learned with, with inspectors, you don't become argumentative with them. Because that's a losing proposition, and you don't tell them how to do their job, because you say.
I hope he knows what he's doing, you know?
Yes, yes, uh, believe me, he's got credentials.
He knows what you're doing, why wouldn't he tell me to put this new ele- electric system in my house?
Well, the thing is, obviously, there's a reason, you may ask me, why do I need that? And the thing is, well, I'll be an argumentative, this, you need that, you need the guidance from him, you don't need to be.
No, I don't, because I couldn't get through to him, you know, that is my problem, I, he won't even listen to me. So, I have spent a lot of time and money on it, and I got the, uh, got the. Permit from the town, okay, I told them what I'm gonna do and everything.
Right.
Now I have done everything, and I can satisfy that.
But you haven't done it to, to code, to safety code, and that's the issue. And the thing is, uh, you can say, well, it works, it worked, I know it's gonna work, I know this is done, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean code, doesn't mean code.
Yeah, codes change from year to year.
Yeah. And even if you have notes.
Is this our copy?
That's our copy, what is that?
So he can review this if he need to to.
Oh, I gotta find it online.
Okay, but I wanna support you in doing this, you, I, I, I give you credit, it's important to save a few dollars, but. When you get an electrical system in, the thing is. You gotta, sometimes maybe worth while to get an electrician, yeah.
Well, I.
I hate to have my house burned down because you missed the door.
System to blow out my house, you know, I want to, but I had a lot of safety points built in.
Okay, but, but the thing is, sometimes what you think is safe, is doesn't mean code for safety. And, and that's the bottom line. And so the thing is, you're gonna meet, if the state just gives you a thumbs up, we're good to go. All right? I'm gonna give you the feedback, these are yours.
All right, so what do you want me to call him now, the guy?
I would call Scott and then you maybe, if Scott and or Brian, and coordinate the two, but be courteous with them.
Can I just make a comment? From my experience in working in that department, you wanna have that list completely one hundred percent fixed. They don't wanna go out and look at three of them and then go have to go back out and do five.
How long the compression, doesn't make sense to you, compression?
If that's what the code is, today's code.
I think that moves on the conduit.
It's just code, yes.
It's code.
Makes perfect sense to me, it's required by EverSource and everything else, it's a requirement, it's in the rules, it's in the regulations. It's not complicated to follow.
No, it's not.
Just because you don't wanna do it. You've got certain criteria you gotta meet, and the state's giving you a list of things you gotta do. Why don't you just do what this guy from the state says you need to do to get it?
If I do, he is not happy, he doesn't have to be the known right.
Have you done him yet?
I've done him, yes.
You just said you didn't do the compression thing.
What pressure and I have to go buy and do it if I have to do that?
Oh, well.
But if I put it down and he says, no, that doesn't.
All right, all right, what I, what I'd like you to do is just talk to Brian about it, but I think Lean gave you, gave you some good information. Knock out ninety-nine percent of what you have here to get done, before you call, so no one's wasting their time. Because you don't wanna deal with them more than one time either.
Yeah.
Get everything done to the best of your ability, and then, then if they find an deficiency, be courteous, say, well, what exactly do I need to do here? And, and others, yeah, I, I see this, these are, these are tourist comments.
Yeah, but they're not very, uh, cooperative, you know? They have like attitude that, you know, you do this, I'm not telling you, this is this, this is what it is, this is a code, okay? But at least be friendly to me, tell me, all right, this doesn't have to be that way.
It's a two-way street.
Yeah.
And the thing is, they're not getting paid, they're not getting, they, they're getting paid to make sure you do it safely, that's what they're getting paid to do. And again, they don't want your house to burn down, they don't want someone get injured, they don't want the linemen working on the line down the road when the power's out. If something's not off right, to get electrocuted.
And, and if, if you're finding that, you know, you feel there's an loss, they're deal direct with Scott, and if the state says he's good with it, I'm sure that our department will be good with it.
Right, if Scott says thumbs up, I, I, our gentleman's not gonna overrule the state.
How was, how was Scott with you when he was out there?
Well, he didn't talk to me, you know, I mean, he was just looking, to me, he looked like he was nitpicking, you know, every little thing, looking at it. He told me, you know, your conduit is not properly skewered.
But, but nit, nit, that's his job, that's his, yeah, that's his job, he gets paid to.
Well, that's what I did, you know, I mean, if you tell me, you think, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't you, why don't you try and work it out with him and talk with him, talk him through those points and see how you make out with him.
Okay.
Scott, Scott, maybe, if, if, if there is, I agree with Dave, this, the state gives you a, we're not gonna overrule the state.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be cautiously hopeful for you, that it'll get done.
Okay, thank you.
I will, I, I'd like to see it done for you. Mailbox items.
Do we have some other people here for us, Mike, or?
No.
No. Um, public comment and. Get through the mailbox, so. Yeah, you're open, public comment.
Public comment, okay.
Okay, um. The attic inspection, uh, over the office.
You wanna speak on that?
I will, uh, I met with Woody early this week, um, I, last week we overruled, uh, we said, no, we didn't need it. Opened up, it was dry, it was good to go. I met with Woody and, uh, he explained to me what, what, what water was coming in, he said it was soaked up there at one point. And, uh, I, he said two people in his office, one has a respiratory illness and he has a respiratory illness, uh, pending. And I said, for, for the matter of safety, I acted, I said, okay, get, get our contractor to come in, handyman. Open it up and inspect it, I gave the okay on behalf of safety, I didn't wait for the board to meet. Okay, I thought it was a safety issue, needed to be addressed immediately. Okay, because it's a little small room, and whenever you go into that small room, you, you guys know as well as I do, it's always stuffy in there. And all we need is have black mold up there, I didn't think it was a, a thing to let go. So, no, no mitigation, just inspect it to make sure, see if there is a problem.
Okay, okay.
He's gonna write a report for us, one of us, huh?
We'll get some back, so that's, okay, then there's a transfer station, uh, fence quote.
I'll recuse myself.
Okay.
Does another repair?
Yes, with a repair, yes.
Oh, this is gutter.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, gutters, 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 just love. Got the, got the quote for the repair.
Good for a quote.
That's one with the proposal, you have an attachment to that.
Okay.
You wanna speak what it's about?
If you would, you said you're on site.
Yeah.
But you, now does it suck finesse for the contractor?
Yeah, as a contractor, uh, um, I'm speaking on behalf of the contractor that bid on this project. I'm the one that originally installed these fences, Woody reached out to me after a resident had. Thrown a, an object over into the construction debris dumpster and had smashed out one of the rollers that slide our roller gates. So in that quote, there's a, changing out that roller, it's a very expensive roller, the roller now slides on and off the sleeve. Um, and then it broke, um, part of the top rel that goes on there, bent some of the fence over. So that's kind of the three thing, three main things on that.
Okay, replace broken hardware, replace broken roller, and adjust all gates as needed.
And that's a, adjusting gates as needed, it's kind of a housekeeping thing, if I go there, we do it, we do it when we're there.
And I make a motion to accept the, uh, um, quote from G N Fencing for eight hundred fifty dollars, repair the fence damage. Replace all broken hardware, adjust gates as needed.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on the state?
No, I think, you know, using the vendor we had, do all the fencing down there is a wise thing.
Again, it's a safety issue. Go ahead.
Yes, um, this suggestion on those, uh, gates.
Right.
Regarding the dumpsters and such.
Right.
But who wants to put some, uh, mirrors back there, so that way when people back up, they can actually see where they're going, you know? See where they're approaching, because right now it's a, it's a blind spot, so you backing up, you kinda have to stop and.
Yeah, especially when you're driving school.
It hasn't been.
No, it hasn't been, but it.
It hasn't been our customers backing into there, it's been.
Oh, I know that.
Our employees driving forward, you know?
I get that, but I mean, we, I know, from experience, if I'm backing my truck up or a trailer back up to it, it's nice to have, if I have a mirror, I can see, like, okay, I've got a foot left. Or I got six, you know, so having to go, it's like, you know, I'm not exactly sure, it just make it a little bit easier just for, for a, you know.
You want a mirror on the.
Well, yeah, you put it up, you know, well, it doesn't have to be on the gate itself, but like on the post, you know, pointing down, so when you backing up, you can see in that mirror, see where you're.
I mean, not for me, I mean, so, I don't, I don't.
It's just to help the folks that are backing up, that aren't used to backing up.
Yeah, they got mirrors on the vehicle.
He's talking about a blind spot mirror, like, we, there's a couple signs on there.
Like that.
If this is, if this is the gate right here, you slide the gate open, it's a post, right, where the gate comes to, put a mirror here, so it's pointing down where they back up into the opening.
I understand where you're coming from, but I wanna let you know that none, none of the repairs that have been made on the fence have been from, from people backing in. So I understand where you're coming from, but all of this has been from resident error, throwing things directly over the fence and not carrying it closed.
I, I think then you'll have to repair the mirror after that.
Just a thought.
All right.
Mirrors on the trucks.
Conclusion, I, if, if we could continue in repairs down there, I'll take it under Moore's years consideration, but a good thought, okay, leave it at that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay, uh, on a favor, Dave, we've got a. All right, okay. Lean, that's approved. All right, next item.
The sign quote.
Got a, uh, sign quote, Woody has a, uh, he, there was on email, I saw it on email today too.
I see it, I'm, I'm emotional if you have it there.
Should be flagged with a.
Yeah, I read it just before the meeting.
You're off your game today, Mike.
I tell you, it was just.
How long up there were all the flags on, Mike?
C, it's C mailbox.
I had it right there. Right in the pile.
Okay.
Thing is, for, for the record, I used to have this black bag, used to get thick and thick and thick, I usually bring stuff home, I bring nothing home with me anymore. Lee would call me the following morning.
This one, this one was on top, actually.
She would call me, she'd call me and say, did you take some? Yeah, I got it, could you bring a profit by, I don't do it anymore, okay, continue, Dave.
Okay, um, D E S requires us to have certain signs on the side, um, on the right-hand side of that property. And they came up, did an inspection, and notified us that we are, we do not have the signage we need. So Woody got an estimate from our, um, Greg, our local handyman, that does a lot of stuff around town for us. And the quote is a bid for six hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents to put in, uh, four-by-four posts, three feet in the ground. And four-by-four, eight footers cross wise to it, and Simpson brackets. And put solar light caps on the top of it and construct a, uh, sign frame. Um, so, to me, it looks reasonable and is something that's gonna work in progress. Um, I think we should go ahead and approve it.
Is it in place of our sign there now?
Uh, we have, we didn't have correct signs on that side of the facility. But.
Did you just screw it to a tree?
Bigger than that.
A big tree.
They, they told them how, how big it had to be and gave us all the information on it.
Okay, I have no issue with that, I think it's.
Can we, what's the sign for, tell that we had a dump there?
Yeah, it is, it's, it's gotta be on the certain sides of the property and, uh, they went over the location it need to be and the signage there. We basically failed, so this is correct, uh, failure.
Make a motion on that?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Greg Miller. GMC Home Improvements for six twenty-one thirty-five to do the sign at the, uh, transfer station.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? Here in that on favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay. You, Town Hall, standing items now.
Do you wanna do the finish?
Say again?
Gutters for next.
Yeah, we've, we've got us first, it's right in front of me.
That's this building?
Yes, 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 we've had two, uh, two quotes, we have two quotes now, I think, correct?
Yeah, we had, I had reached out to the previous contractor we used last year for the police station when we had that small gutter project.
Okay.
Um, and I had also reached out to the other contractor that we didn't go with, had a headbid this last year, um, this building. So we received two bids from them, um, Lean had also reached out to Builders and Soul Products.
Yep.
Uh, we have not received a call back from them, it's been, I think, over a week, you reached out through email and you reached out through, through phone. We haven't received a call back or email back from them.
Okay, um, I'd say we've met on due diligence and getting quotes, I think, with the two of them, they seem to, they seem competitive, like one seems a little bit, uh.
I believe the one for gutter done is a five-inch gutter. And I specifically asked if they did six-inch gutters here, because this is a large roof, they do not do six-inch, so that quote. Or gutter done, it's only for five-inch, gutters plus, I believe, is for six-inch, that's what was asked, I haven't reviewed that.
And, and it's close to the other price?
I believe the gutters, uh, I gotta look at that.
It's gutters plus, so gutters done does not do six-inch gutter, so they, they wanna put five-inch, that's a no-go.
I believe, I mean, we're up for discussion on that, but I feel like due to the size of the roof, we should.
Just this one building?
Yes.
It's eleven, eleven-six.
One of the quotes has gutter guards and one does not, we.
What's that one, Mike?
Uh, that same thing, you gotta watch, because they add, there's two separate covers on that.
So why is nine thousand then?
Gutter guard is the, uh, eleven-six.
And they have, um, forty-nine seventy, but this, uh, premium guard covers is forty-one fifty. And that's about, uh, that's nine thousand dollars right there and change, and that's only for five-inch.
Yeah, I would like to wait.
You wanna wait for one more?
I just had gutters put on an entire house. It was only a thousand dollars.
What was the third one we're still waiting on?
Yeah, I can build the installation, I can call it again.
I will call him tomorrow for you, okay?
Okay.
And I'll get him over here, see him.
Yeah, give my email.
And then Justin can.
Just, gotta make sure that we stay on the specific.
We have those pictures.
Stay, stay, stay with the specifications.
I wouldn't have gone away, but I think with the pricing, it deserves that one final call and I'll call him, get him going.
Let's keep the prices up, the, the one I quoted was not for the item again, so I'm, I'm gonna, I can disclude that right, this is not included right now.
They won't see it anyway.
It's to the public, I gotta be, be fair. Able for this week. Okay, um, I'll sit, we have a cute couple outstanding items on the, uh, library town hall, uh, pictures, uh, door lock. Remember the door locks were found to be defective and we're supposed to get new ones. Any word on that, no, we have no word on that?
Still waiting.
Okay.
We're on Brookside as far as the temp.
He said no one is shown up the last weekend.
I'll make a note, I'll call Brookside tomorrow myself too.
Yeah, and I'm going through belt, uh, through, uh, coin, but.
Which we should, but.
Yeah.
All right, and just, uh, just, uh, some follow-up, we put a dehumidifier in there, the, the town minister with the, based upon the humidity levels. Mary reported this, that the dehumidifier's working great, the first time she feels that the basement is dry and warm.
Yeah.
That's good. I, I'm, I'm gonna go get out and experience it myself, because I, I go.
It was always mild, always.
No, it was always nasty down there, and I think it's, it's dry and warm, I can, I wanna see that. Okay, and.
Down there in the seventies.
Say again?
Should've been down in the seventies, I can tell you.
The thing is, I, I, they actually use that for facilities down there, I, I just, it's, it's really, it's pretty cool. Uh, if the, if the dehumidifier works, that's great. Pro-technology also removed some paper with a smoke detector in the front floor, I guess it was, uh, on, they put it up to insulation sustainers. And, I don't wanna talk about the tables at all, gentlemen.
Okay, can I talk on this?
Please, yeah.
Um, based on the fact that the upstairs reservations is becoming very busy. Um, many of them have twenty-five, thirty, fifty people, seventy-five people are the quantities of, um, people attending these events. And they're, one organization, the Garden Club, has the manpower to go get them from the storage that's at the highway garage. And then they ask to get extra time to return them, but I feel like there is no person, a maintenance person, that can. Move these things on a regular basis, and I'd like the board to consider if those tables get moved over there, that they get, stay, they stay there, they're brand new. They're the plastic, but they're seventy-two inch, they do require, there's two handles, they do require two people to move them, so it would be, you know.
You wanna move the round tables over?
Round tables over, and we had several plastic chairs, they're not brand new, but they're plastic, so they're a lot more lightweight and probably, um, better for the floors. That were donated by the casado, so to accommodate the six chairs, it has six tables with seven chairs. And then there's a couple of long ones we already have up there, maybe any chair that's in good condition with, that's plastic. To relocate them in there, so that we don't have to worry about.
So you're talking about putting forty-two chairs up there also?
Yeah.
They fold, but they're small, they're really small chairs.
Plastic folding chairs.
They were.
Then we use them at old, old home day, and that's, this is what they were purchased for.
I'd consider that, go take a look at it.
Only because these events are coming up, and I just don't have.
What events?
In the memo that you've got in your packet, there's a first event, which is birthday party, which has been canceled. Um, December eighth is a, um, Bow High School, which is the part of the Dunbarton group. Uh, hockey team holiday potluck, fifty people. On December ninth is Santa Claus greets the kids, seventy-five people estimated. And December eleventh is the Garden Club, Dunbarton Garden Club annual event, twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five people. They just don't find that this is sufficient enough for all the people to, maybe if they have a plate in hand, to eat something or just. And it would be nice for them to have someplace they could just put a tablecloth on, down and sit and.
They only work for, what, a hundred and eighteen years?
But right now, that front hallway on.
I'm just wondering if those round tables are too cumbersome, if we should do more of those square tables like Justin said. I'm just wondering if those round tables are too cumbersome, if we should do more of those square tables like Justin said.
Well, they fold in half and the, the way Don Larson explained it is folded in half. Um, they would take a, I wanna say a four by eight, I sent an email, a four by eight space, so it's not like they would. You know, I think they could, I, I don't know if you wanna look at them and, and decide, but that front hallway that's near, closest to the stairwell is empty.
On the second floor.
On the second floor. That's right, right now, we've put the two long tables because there's still, we need some organizing in the other storage with the doors.
Yeah, it just took me forever to get that area empty finally.
Yeah.
And cautious about filling it, cause that's also the emergency access there and the problem is. People don't always put things all the way over to the side like they're supposed to.
That's a completely separate room from that. You, you have come, uh, a double door and the hallway door is directly at the crosswalk.
You don't have to tell me how it is.
Yeah.
Go up there right now, there's two tables leaning on the wall that's going down the fire escape. The two plastic tables, not over there, right on the wall for the fire escape. That's why I spent all that time cleaning that room out, that's why I'm cautious of filling it back up.
Putting rectangular tables, at least in the back, towards the back of the room and keep them in the back.
Oh, I thought that's where we had put them originally because there were flags from the, um. The veterans that hold their ceremonies there.
We put them in there, we'll just make sure that we make a note to everybody using them, put them back there, cause.
Yeah, yeah. So someone's gotten, it's getting sloppy. I, I mean, I, I apologize.
Everybody takes an easy way out.
Right, and this puts it where they can put it.
Yeah.
I mean, they might be moved now, that was a couple of weeks ago, I saw them up there, but.
Yeah.
All right. I'd say, then if we go up there and they're, they're blocking the area, we.
If it becomes a problem, I think we're talking about purchasing something like this. I mean, this is something one person can handle.
Yeah, we have two like that and then.
Yeah, we'll start with the round ones. If they're too cumbersome or they're rolling over all the time, then we'll.
No, they fold in half, so there's a flat bottom. And it's like a suitcase and then you can open them up and then set them up.
Okay, we'll try them up.
And the chairs. I'd say, do what you have to do to make your work a little bit easier over there.
Can I lean on the hot, transfer station employees to get this over there?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, for, um, overtime's prohibited for that. I have no problem with that.
Well, if they don't have over forty hours, then. If they don't have four, over forty hours, they will.
Well, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, but you, I, you can go ask them, they're gonna help you out. No problem.
Okay, if I schedule it, they get a three hour minimum.
Right.
Okay.
That's good. All right, I think that's, I'm gonna close mailbox items now. And I'm gonna over to the public. Back row. Yes, sir, yes.
Yep.
Come on up.
Thank, thank play our conservation commission.
You've been waiting patiently.
Yeah.
I won't want to, I won't.
I'm glad I didn't have to go after the guy who was sitting here before, that'd be a tough act to follow.
Listen, I am a state regulator.
So the reason I'm here is that, um, my understanding is that somebody spoke to you at your last meeting. I think it might have been a member of the Board of Assessors.
Correct.
About the, um, you know.
Fifty fifty split.
Fifty fifty split, you know, to the, uh, current use land change tax.
Right.
That goes to the, um, conservation, you know, fund. And so what I wanted to do, and I don't think you folks are probably aware of it, um, but. Number one, you know, it makes sense, um, the way the split works or the funding works. That as land comes out of, let's say, open space or current use, we got a little something to, um. To balance that off in terms of investments we're able to make in open space. And a lot of towns, as they've gotten more developed, have actually dedicated a hundred percent of the. Land use change tax to the conservation fund. Um, I would say the majority just do fifty percent and that's what we've done, you know, for quite a few years.
Most all conservations are funded the same way?
Yeah, it's, it's a state law. That's, that's the mechanism that they, in order to be able to fund the conservation.
I'm, I'm just putting my hand, head around it now. I, I've heard in the past that they had always a cap, you know, there's, how much is, how much is. Say we have a banner year of development and you have a banner, you have a, almost like you create a slush fund of how much money you need. And in the past, they put caps on it, so, you know, what, what's a reasonable cap to put on? If, if there is such thing, is it, is it a good thing? I saw that in the past. I saw limitations in the past. I, and the thing is.
Well, I, I could tell you the backstory on that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, basically when the, um, you know, there was a town meeting warrant article. To give fifty percent of the land use change tax to the conservation fund.
Right.
And so somebody made an amendment to that to cap it at twenty-five hundred dollars a year, which essentially was nothing, right?
Correct.
And that went on for years and years and when I, I've been here thirty years.
Accepted.
Yeah, and, but then, so anyways, and, you know, folks from the Conservation Commission would get up every year and try to get that rescinded. Never went anywhere. So then when we started to do Kimball Pond, um, we basically went and flyer the whole town. Um, to get that changed.
And in fact, I saw some of the flyers from historical documents.
Yeah, so to get that changed. And so one of the rationales for doing that is kind of what you have in front of you. And people have the mistaken, you know, sort of thought that, um, you know, the more houses we have in town, the more money we get. You know, in terms of the tax base. But what, this is from, um, uh, uh, basically a formula that the UNH Cooperative Extension developed years and years ago. And what I did was I just applied it, and I've done this in the past, um, to our situation here in Dunbarton. Using information from the town report. And so essentially what it shows is, you know. Pop, you know, how many households we have in town, roughly a thousand. I got that from the census.
Okay.
And again, I'm not claiming this is a hundred percent right, but it's pretty.
Ballpark.
Ballpark, right? And so town budget's roughly, um, two million dollars on the town side, you know, uh, for, for the year. And on the school side, it's over eight million dollars, okay? And so if you figure out, you divide the number of households into the town budget.
Now you're calling that school revenue?
Well, just, just hold on a minute. So you divide the number of households, uh, in town into the town budget, the budget on the town side, two million. Um, it comes out to about eighteen hundred dollars per household. So that's the expenses to run the dump, the police station, you know, et cetera, if you spread it out across every household in town, okay? On the school side, what, the, um, taxes that are collected to support the school are over eight million dollars. And there's four hundred and sixty-six students, um, this is from the town report in grades K through twelve that we're paying for. You divide that four hundred and sixty-six students into the eight million dollars. And the cost per student is a little over seventeen thousand dollars per student, okay? And somebody might argue with that and so forth, you know, special ads more and all that kind of thing, but it's just in the large.
That's an aggregate picture.
Aggregate picture, the big picture, okay? And so, um, in order to recruit that, um, and this isn't to say having kids is bad. Or people shouldn't have kids or whatever, it's just the way the tax, our tax system works in the town. If you don't have any children in school, you're basically, uh, taking out of the pot, let's say, of all the taxes that are collected. The eighteen hundred dollars for the town services. If you have one child in school, you're taking out that eighteen hundred dollars, that household. Plus seventeen thousand dollars to educate that child, so that's nineteen thousand.
And I think seven is, has no bearing on this at all. When, when you say, I, let's say, I have no children in school.
Yeah.
But the thing is, um, I pay school taxes.
Right.
And I don't do it, I, I, I don't like to pay taxes, but I pay taxes, but the thing is, that tax, that's, that's the quality of schools that are generating this town. Now, they keep my property values up?
You're missing point.
Yeah, no, I, I totally get that, but the thing is, is that, um. All this goes to show is that, um, by having that conservation fund. And using it to offset some of the development, where basically it's not really costing the town money. It's basically, um, saving the town money in terms of.
Right.
You know, expenses primarily on the school side.
What percent, can you ask, answer this question, what percentage of the town is in conservation use right now?
I don't know what percent.
I'd like to find that statistic out and, and are we, are we like the number one in the state or number of the last in the state? As far as percentage of town property. And the biggest challenge I find in this town is like, we have residents, we have no industry.
Yes.
And, and that hurts the, the tax rate.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's why, you know.
And it has nothing to do with not doing the conservation.
That's why towns are looking, you know, often for, you know, commercial or industrial development and not so much, you know, to offset.
Dunbar, we are so at risk here for, um, the state coming down at, in the legislative area and saying. That five acre lot you have?
Yeah.
Out the window.
Yeah.
We, most towns can get by with an acre or less. You can build whatever you want.
Right.
And, and that would just destroy, you talk about the, uh, the, the pictures Dunbar we have, that would destroy our town as, as we know it.
Yeah.
And, and so, yeah, it's like, it's, I, I, I see, we have to have a balance between conservation and what we do with residential values.
Yeah.
Well, if they get it all under conservation, we won't have to worry about the state doing that to us.
Yeah, but that, that's not gonna happen, right? So, um, yeah. But anyway, I, I guess what I'm, you know, it's like, and the way, you know, the, the money goes into the fund is that when we have a lot of development like we do right now.
Right.
That goes up and then in like two thousand seven, two thousand eight, when there was no development.
It goes to.
It goes, you know, it's like minimal, it's two thousand bucks a year or something like that.
What do you see as your future projects on the road?
Well.
I think you've done quite well with your conservation land use change tax over the years.
Yeah.
What, what do you see for big projects that we have to have so much money put into that pot?
What it allows us to do is if things come up, then we can react, you know, to it. And what we've done in the past is.
Well, can, can I share something I'm concerned with?
Sure.
And the thing is, I'm, I'm looking at it as a, as a selectman, looking at it as a citizen. You're in direct competition with the Board of Selectmen dealing with some Gerber property. You wanna take it all and put it into conservation and we wanted at least to develop it potentially for a new school, new safety center, a new town hall. And we're, we're basically been thrown to the curbside. This, this body here has been thrown to the curbside somewhat, excluded from meetings. And now it's, now it's to a point where, um. The slice that we've been giving, the piece of pie was this big. It was, we were gonna take this much, now we're down to this much that the town is gonna get, less than eight acres of a piece of property that you, we're in direct competition with the, with the conservation.
I think there might be some, like, misperception.
Well, the thing is, um, Dave, help me out here.
Well, they, we just know the curve of property.
I have not heard about, see, I think correctly, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I know that, but again, we, we had one, we've had.
Excuse me, it's a.
Like one.
But it wasn't the conservation people were changing the pie either though.
No, I know, but there was other, other factors involved.
Well, yeah, it was, I, my understanding is it was the owner of the property who approached Five Rivers. About actually donating that property.
Okay.
That's, it's not, and so Five Rivers came to us to con, you know.
But, but the thing is, I see, it's like.
Yeah.
And I, I.
We're not, we're not opposed.
But I think we have to work together in a sense that.
No, I'm totally open to that.
In the sense that a, a piece of property comes up and the, the, we look at this town center here. And there's so little, uh, room for expansion and, yeah, we can put a building over here maybe, but the thing is, um, ten years from now, I, I. And it's in conservation.
I, I went with Bob Martell and met with, um, Les Hammond, his wife, to see if we could work a deal when they wanted to sell it.
Right.
And Les wasn't willing to do it because he didn't wanna have to wait for town meeting votes and things like that. And, you know, what I was hoping we could work out at that time is that we could use the conservation fund to purchase, let's say, the back acres. Of that property in the town, yeah. And so, you know, that was, but I didn't have any idea that. And, and then there was like some fund setup to try to save money for land, I believe.
Well, we have some dollars to put aside.
Right.
The thing is, the, the thing is, this board can't do it. There's a legislative body which is the, in control there.
Yeah, yeah.
And so.
Again, we're not trying, I, I think it's a miss, you know, this is pretty recent.
But, but, but I'm looking at, put that one aside, but I, I think we have to work a little bit closer in a sense that. A piece of property comes up and the thing is, oh, let's make it conservation. Oh, maybe conservation, we should be thinking of, uh, a school, maybe a new school, uh, down there. And, and that's my concern.
Okay, no, I think that's totally reasonable. I think.
Okay, yeah.
That's part of the selectman's problem.
What's this?
Well, if you know that this piece of property that you're interested in, why don't you talk to the Conservation Commission?
Well, the thing is, I did have, most recently I got some, I, I.
I'll, I'll speak to that. Um, on the, on this piece of property that Mike is speaking of, it's the land property.
Yeah.
And, um, I came to the Conservation Commission, cause that piece of property, um, originally was talked about. Saving the front parcel closest to Route thirteen for some town use.
Yeah.
Of sorts, whether the town purchased it or was donated, however it was gonna end up.
Yeah.
And then the backland, obviously in conservation to help, you know, connect the Gerber property with the other properties in the back, which makes great sense.
Yeah.
And how that was gonna be laid out, so, uh, we talked about it as a board, cause that's one of the last pieces close to town. We're looking at some other ones that are close here. To see if there's something we can do, trying to follow our capital improvement program, you know, for the town to get some. Land that's closer to town in case we need to do a, a public safety building in the future or something, just to look forward and be proactive.
Yeah.
So I came to your board to ask about that piece of property specifically. And I was told at your board meeting that you guys were already working on that piece of property. This was recent, so.
I know, I'm trying to remember, yeah.
And, and I said, well, I, I said, well, your board remembers that this property was talked about having a multiple use and your, your board agreed with that.
All right.
And I said, well, I'm here because I'm looking to work with you guys on that.
I think it came up, yeah, okay.
And it was said that, and it was said that, you know, we're already working on that, but it didn't seem like anybody wanted to work with the Board of Selectmen on it.
Okay.
They wanted to work on, on their own, cause they were looking to have the property in conservation.
Okay.
And so I left that meeting feeling like, hmm, here I am approaching a, a property that's here coming up.
No, I had, I, I, I do understand why you would think that.
And so, so I left that meeting like.
Yeah, okay.
I, I've come back to these guys, said they didn't look like they wanted to work with us at all on that property.
Okay, yeah.
And then, and then I kinda let it go.
Yeah.
And then I was appro, approached by the owner of the land again.
Yeah.
And said, David, I'd like you to come meet with me.
Okay, so.
And so I did do that.
Yeah.
And, um, I met with Jacques and had her draw out what we had talked about when I met with her.
Okay.
Brought that back down to her and originally I think she was talking between fifteen and eighteen acres on that front piece.
Yeah.
And that's what she remembers from her original discussion. And that basically cut, cut it off without getting into the wetlands or anything in the back. And, um, and looking at that with her son, they decided that her son wanted to keep more frontage.
Yeah.
And then they wanted to keep. They wanted to keep that little field. You know, there's one field when you first, and then that second big field.
Yeah.
The second big field was always gonna be in conservation, but between those is a wet dip. So we stayed out of the wetlands and just basically tried to keep the dry land for the town use.
Yeah.
So when they came back to us and I put down what her son and her had asked for, it reduced the acreage to about eight acres and it made it kind of L shaped. It doesn't leave a lot of, you know, we have already a town hall with no parking.
Yeah.
We have a, you know, a town safety building with limited parking. We have a school with limited parking.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that we had acreage to do the property.
Yeah.
Um, if there was a building or even a soccer field, that there would be equivalent parking for that. And now the layout doesn't quite, I don't think, meet a lot of the needs of the town. I will still put it in front of the voters. Because I think that's fair, but, but I've gotta talk to them one more time.
Piece at this point. And the thing is.
But, but again, that, that's, I, I totally understand.
Nothing to do with you guys.
Well, and, and what complicates it a little bit is we're really not. Doing the negotiation on the conservation property with the owner.
And I wanted to ask.
Five Rivers, it's Five Rivers, yes.
Well, the thing is, what I wanna be sure that, we gotta keep communication open.
Yeah, no, I totally, you know something, yeah, I, I.
When a piece of property comes up.
Yeah.
You know, I don't wanna be the last one to know about it, then you already made it, he already encumbered it into conservation.
No, I, I, I totally understand that and just from my perspective, we had heard that you went and talked to Mrs. Lane. And I'm like, uh, so I got an email from somebody at Five Rivers saying, hey. She met with David Dahl and he gave her this little map, you know, and, and who's David Dahl, um, you know, and it's like, oh, he's a selectman. So there's a.
Little friction there.
Well, not friction, but it's just not good to, and we're like, oh, uh-oh, you know, um, she was trying to give.
To work with you guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I.
I said specifically, I'm at this meeting, the other selectman asked me to come here to try and work with you guys on the property. And it was said at the time, we already have somebody working on that. I wasn't told who it was at your meeting.
Okay.
Um, I found out later who it was, but it didn't, there wasn't this warm fuzzy feeling about working with the town.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all right. Dave, so that was a good thing you did. You went to their meeting. The problem, you guys didn't follow up and invite them into your meeting and talk to them about it.
No, I, I, I think the point, I totally get your point about, um, you know, better communication, yeah.
Right.
And if, you know.
I felt like you guys wanted to get it all in conservation, you didn't wanna work with us at all.
I just, I I honestly don't remember it as well as I probably should.
I'm gonna ask you one other question, because I was there and I know Jeff's got a question too. I found out that that the back property. Is gonna be a donation when I met with her.
And I think the whole thing was gonna be, that's what they talked to Five Rivers about, yeah.
And 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 I don't know about the town portion, she said that she would work on numbers, I would get back to us, but. Uh, my other thought was. If it's a direct deno- donation to the town of Dunbar. Why is it gonna be to Five Rivers and not just to you guys as a conservation commission?
Cause it would be to the Five Rivers, the donation would be made of the conservation easement.
Why? Why not just to you?
Um, because they're doing all of the work with her to arrange the um, you know.
It's a, it's a donation.
Yeah, no, but again, she somehow she approached them. Because they had worked with the curbers to get theirs, so that's where the lot, you know.
I just, I'm just thinking out loud, a light bulb went off in my head. Because I could understand Five Rivers being involved if there needed to be money raised, okay? But when there was no money needed to be raised, I was like, why isn't there just a direct donation? And I asked her that directly and she didn't know the reason why either.
I think it's because she talked to Five Rivers and not.
I thought Five Rivers paid the curbers about a hundred and fifty thousand and you guys contributed twenty-eight towards it.
Or thirty, yeah, that and and we did, and they, but she wasn't, what they did was they sold. The easement on their property. Um, essentially to Five Rivers. And what she was going to do, my understanding is, and I have never talked to her, never met her. She was just talking about donating the whole.
And so light bulb went off in my head. Why is Five Rivers involved at all if it's a direct donation, because all you're talking about is having somebody like Jacques map out the accurate.
Yeah, it's the close, that's what we agreed to do is do the closing costs and so forth and the survey and all that stuff.
So you guys are paying for that?
Up to thirty thousand dollars.
And yet the easement's gonna go to.
And we would be the backup easement holder of the town at Dunbar, yeah.
We had a comments, two comments here.
I have to actually, I agree with Dave, I mean, if that's the possibility that it's gonna be a donation. Kick Five Rivers out of the picture and just have the conservation commission pay the legal fees and the closing costs.
They were already paying for him.
Right, well, I mean, but make sure, I mean, you know, we get town attorneys, if that's what they need, an attorney, well, whatever the case may be, and do it ourselves, so we keep it in house.
Well, the thing is, they do have to be careful of Five Rivers, because Five Rivers helps them out with other large pieces like.
Yeah, they did the stone. One, they did the curb, the curb one, I mean, it's what they basically do and I'll just. They 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 have the expertise more than we do to do those things, I'll just be honest with you on that, yeah.
Jeff, you had a comment?
Typically, when you deal with them, you know, they put restrictions on it too.
Yeah, it would be.
They they put restrictions, you've got on several already, they have restrictions on it. As far as like even cutting brush and maintaining roads. They'll allow on every. Every damn road.
That hundred and twenty-two acre.
You go the left, go over the Kimball Pond, go on. Well, maybe it's not Five Rivers, but it's another organization. So I guess what I'm saying is, if you guys are really serious about doing this, make sure whatever pieces get out of there, they don't have the hooks in it, because then they'll be running.
Well, there wouldn't be, that part would be left out.
Yeah, that that's the only thing, because they will put restrictions on it to tie your hands.
Well, the.
Dramatically.
Again, the 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 easement allows for agriculture, forestry, there's a carve-out typically around the house. So that if they wanted to build some, you know, whatever, an outbuilding or whatever, they can do that around that. That would be, and we actually checked with Five Rivers to make, we suggested that the easement be similar to, you know, on both properties. So whatever one is in place, um, would be similar, I mean, it's pretty.
Will you uh, will you make sure that the fields that exist out there can be used agriculturally?
That's typically what we would do, but again, it's I I I'm not sure if. You know, again, with the curb or property, they can do whatever they want on their land. Um, just as they're doing now, that's the advantage to them, if they wanna log it, they can do that, if they want, you know, maintain their. Farm fields and so forth, they can do that, so whatever the easement's on, essentially the property owner can do pretty much. Generally what they want, um, except for subdivide it, you know, put some type of industrial facility on it.
Should be able to use them agriculturally again.
That that was one of the things I wanna know.
I know that was.
If they wanted, to be honest, if they wanted to clear property for more fields, that they would be allowed to do that. You know, if they wanted to do something like, you know, they discovered spring water underneath there, wanna put a spring water bottling plant in there, they wouldn't be.
I'm gonna go back to the original. We were here for uh fifty percent and. On the table, there's suggesting that it shouldn't be cut, and I I I'm ambivalent, I don't, yes or no, I'm not sure here yet. I'm looking at historical documents, I've seen caps, I've seen a lot of the flyers you put, that was put out years ago, well before my time even in town. I thought it was interesting reading, but the thing is, uh, but and I just, I looked at what, how big your coffers are today and they're pretty healthy.
Yeah, again, but yeah, it is, but it's like two hundred thousand dollars, how much land does that buy you? You know, I mean, that's it's.
In today's market, uh, maybe five acre lot?
Yeah, right, so that's the, and what we've always done is we've taken that money to leverage grants that we get from the state. When we did the Kimball Pond conservation, you know, area, the last project. Um, that was a one point two million dollar project. And a hundred thousand dollars came from our conservation fund. And all the rest of it came from the federal government, L chip and others, and you have to provide match or they won't. Do they won't work.
They won't work, okay, um. My heart's with you. And the thing is, um, it came from the assessing.
Yeah, and I'm gonna go meet with, you know.
Do you know the copy of that?
Yeah.
Since nineteen ninety, I don't.
Go ahead.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, well, you're missing the whole point though. Because um, so they got a hundred thousand dollars this year. Take half of that, the town wants to keep that half. Well, no, I'm.
Two hundred this year.
They made how much?
We get ninety, they get ninety.
That's what I'm talking about, their shares say, okay, I said a hundred thousand, take half of that, because the town wants to take it back. So what are you gonna, what do you think fifty thousand dollars is gonna cut the taxes by? And versus the new house lots that you're gonna have if you don't buy the property.
Rid dollars thirty-six cents.
You know what I'm saying, though? So you're gonna pay a lot more, you're gonna lose that fifty thousand faster than fast, because you're gonna be. New houses with, like you said, three kids is gonna cost the town fifty-three thousand dollars. One house. You understand?
I'm conservation minded, I I think we should leave it how it is myself.
You're gonna cut your own road, you're gonna cut the town's road.
It was brought up to us, I think it's, I.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just advocating for them because I think it makes sense to me in the long run.
And I I hear, the thing is, no, I'm I'm open, I'm a sponge here, I'm just soaking this information in, this is all news.
Sounds like good money fifty thousand, you're gonna get back, the town's gonna get back, but like I said, everybody's pockets gonna get pennies and then you're gonna pay for it later.
Again, it was brought by a se- separate committee and the thing is, it was interesting, and the thing is, uh. I had directed Lee to send out some information, some historical documents, so I can understand it, because I have no understanding of it. And I thought it was amazing, cap at twenty-five hundred, okay, that sounds like a good cap.
I I just wanna point out that this board um said that they were just looking for other avenues for increasing our revenues. So if we're losing revenues on this side, how can we increase uh revenues elsewhere? So that we can help keep the tax rate down, and that's all that they were doing.
No, and that that was my understanding, but I was just.
Well, again, it's, you were gonna be called in whether you came tonight or not, you were.
I mean, I I had a conversation with the school board last week about how, you know, what they could do to try and block the tax basically. As I said, at the current rate, like the school added two dollars to the taxes left. Ours was fifty-nine cents, I mean, we had the road bond and some other things that, you know, we couldn't quite keep it as level as we wanted to, which we've been trying to do.
Towns is smart, the the whole and the.
We are, but I mean, you know, if your average tax is what, five hundred, eight hundred dollars on an average house in Dunbar.
Minecraft seven, I know, yeah.
How how long can you live in this town? Cause you were gonna retire and have to pay a thousand dollars a month just. To to just to live there after you own the high there.
No, I I totally understand that, and I apologize for you for bad, you know, poor communication on our part.
That's the only thing I see as a positive outcome, we gotta communicate more.
No, I I I, yeah.
And especially if something comes up and the thing is, if if it's buildable, a buildable parcel that could be beneficial to uh down the road. Cause I hate that.
No, I I actually brought this up with Five Rivers when, you know, the man guy came to meet with us and like, hey, just so you know, you know, we had this discussion. You know, a number of years ago, when the parcel was up for sale, that the town, you know, could use the front part. And and we would basically kinda combine um finances to, you know, have bought that, you know, which we were all for, you know? Um, so, again, I apologize for um.
Well, I think we, I think it was, we can get better from here, that's all.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the communication is a big thing for us, because we're kind of aware what you guys are doing, you're aware what we're doing, I mean, uh.
Maybe sometimes we gotta just maybe, uh, if something comes up, just invite a selectman to go to your meeting.
Yeah, or, you know, you can call me, um. I I'll, yeah, anyways, we we can talk later, but, okay, I apologize for that, yeah.
Okay, Justin. One more for a comment?
Yeah, um, don't forget, you guys have a master plan that might help uh, like figure out what's going on.
Part of it, Brian, that's what we're doing with that land, it's a master plan, call it out for that.
Exactly, yeah, I do have a question about the conservation for the rent. Do you know what your intent and goals are for conservation for the next, you know, say, five, ten years, I mean, you guys have. Because, I mean. The town's growing and as conservation is going one direction, town's gonna go the other way, I mean, it'll be kinda nice to know.
Yeah, so we basically have and have had for a long time, you know, a plan as to where our priorities are.
Do the publisher anywhere? The publisher anywhere?
It was years ago.
Yeah, but this is now.
I mean, there is the the green space plan on the um town's webpage, our webpage on the town website. But it's essentially the Bella Brook corridor, um, Kimball Pond, um. Long Pond, potentially if possible. Um, Purgatory Pond, we looked at and there was some land potentially available there years ago, but it was way too much money.
That's a state, that's a state.
Okay, alright, I I I hope we believe, we have no plan to challenge anything, we're just.
And and again, they're happy to come and talk with you if there's other, you know, yeah.
But it was just brought to our attention, we said, we said it scratch, you know.
I I think if, uh, for the ones that I have, I kind of have mixed feelings, I'm just speaking for both sides now. If we had an industrial area, a commercial zone, somewhere where there was some businesses, a grocery store that. Could potentially pick up some of the, uh, all we have is utilities, and they keep fighting us every year for their taxes, so.
That big utilities coming through that, picking them one.
Right, it it's gonna.
Gonna give us four hundred thousand a year offset.
Additional?
Not taxes.
No, just offset value.
I think it's just value.
Just value, they basically. Make that bigger substation.
But they don't pay us more taxes.
Oh, they do, they will, yeah, absolutely. In fact, I even got a a call from a state representative, he said, he wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not getting any free electricity, anything reduced free, I said. Yes, we know, I we we fully cognizant of that, and the thing is, the only thing we're getting out of it is increased revenue from taxes. And it starts to see, when they ever, they put a new lineup, it starts depreciation schedule all over again.
Oh, yeah.
It is four hundred thousand.
What's the depreciation schedule, I mean, I know they've always wanted to be like ten years and the the thing is worthless and, you know, we always thought that.
Well, the thing is, the person who's our, who speaks for us is uh, Mr. Susi.
Right, Sam Susi, yeah.
And uh, he represents us as well as many other municipalities and deal with that, and he's our subsheermatic expert when it comes to that, and we pay him dearly for it, but it's well worth every penny.
To answer your question, Brian, they've come up with a newer formula that seems to be working. And seems to be right in line of what public service is somewhat happy with and what the towns are happy with and it's uh. They they fight about it, but it comes to that.
It still challenges us all the time.
Still challenge it, but it's what comes out in the court and that new rate is what we're basing our taxes on, so. When we're looking at our revenue, we're not at a big loss at any one year, like we used to be.
With abatements.
So, it's uh, it's much better now.
Okay, thank you much, I appreciate it.
You still on public comment?
Go ahead.
Oh, thanks.
I was up at the gas station, we pulled some dirt in there from our old work project on Red Road, and I was pushing it, but I happened to notice. It caught my eye on your solar panels out back. It seems to be some settlement in the footing, which has caused the solar panels to shift.
I think they would like that when they put them in.
No, I don't think, I think it's because the soil isn't, they were built on a landfill. And if you look down at the things, got a pretty good dip to it, and I went over and looked at the panel, and actually where two of them meet, they've started to separate. They're not hitched together continuously, I checked all the rest of them and they were, that's why. There's, so I don't know if you want somebody to look at it, I don't know if.
It says still a leased item, we definitely definitely wanna do it before we own it.
And the footing's cracked and it's shifted a couple inches both ways up and down, but the actual solar panel itself. Is starting to separate.
It's current estate, I think.
You might, I was just thinking, I don't know, but you might wanna have somebody to look at it.
Service call at least.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know, even when they installed those, they said that there was gonna be some of that potential.
Did it do any borings there?
I don't think so.
No, I remember when we had the meeting out there, I explained to them what was there, they just turned the shit on.
It just went right over.
But it is, I said, seemed to care. As I said, it is leased.
Nobody seemed to care, and like I said, I think it has settled some in it, cause the panel is shifting.
Okay, so noted, we'll get, we'll make a call.
Try to tie a rod or no, finally?
Alright, um, public comment, I'm gonna close and bring it back to the board. Lean. Okay, we do have non-public, so I'm gonna let, let the board, no, wait, let the board speak, let the writers go ahead.
At the planning board meeting last night, we did have two releases of. Um, bonds for two completed projects. One is on Zachary Drive, that is in the amount of forty-four thousand one hundred, we voted to release that. Um, lean, um, based on Jeff's recommendation of that up to par.
And the town.
Which street, what road?
Zachary Drive. And we also made a um. Approval to release the lien of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for um another development. Um, countryside estates, based on the town engineer's um recommendation and also Jeff Crosby's as an outreach.
Okay, anything else? Wait, no, David?
I did get one bid in for the stone for the um. The older town hall building. We did not include the bid to um share this stone up around this building, so. I'm gonna wait, we have one more bid coming in, I think early next week, the guy was up north, so.
That's why you wanted to wait, just to see if we get a little.
I'd like to close out a few of these things before the end of the year, but it's like pulling teeth getting quotes now from people.
And I'd like to make a motion going non-public. For our R S eight ninety-one alpha. Thank you, Kevin, for coming tonight.